Zoning amendment, solar farm regulation. Once again, I don't think we have an applicant, so Mr. Shuck, if you would mind, just giving us a quick overview would be super helpful.
Yes, and I'm going to ask Mr. Shoup, feel free to chime in anywhere on this one.
He's got his own section next.
He's got his own, okay. The way this came about, this whole solar farm issue, is Mr. Robb's office was alerted to the prospect that there are several solar energy companies that are interested in parcels within West Deer Township. With that said, it caused us to look at our ordinance and realize that we have very little, if nothing, related to solar farms. And I'm talking about the large-scale, multi-acre, you know, developments that you see. So, this is meant to address that, because as, as you all well know, if we do not have anything in the ordinance regulating a use, then if an application came in, there was really not much the township could do to regulate that use. So, actually, Mrs. Pachowski, in his office, has written several solar ordinances for a number of her clients who have dealt with this very issue. So she is the chief architect of the ordinance that is in front of you. It was also reviewed by Mr. Robb, as well as, I believe, another attorney in his office, before it was presented. And so that is the reason why this has come up, and it's kind of out of the blue, I'll say, because, again, this is an issue we're trying to get ahead of before it's a problem for West Deer. Did I explain that pretty accurately, Mr. Shoup?
I, I would agree with that. I think, you know, Mr. Robb did explain to the supervisors that, as with any zoning ordinance, regulations that they can be subject to change at any point in the future. So, he thought that this was a legitimate, smarting point to at least have something on the books.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Do I have anyone from the public who would like to comment? I know there's somebody.
Okay. Public's commenting.
I didn't want to close the comment before you had it.
Okay, I made a few copies. I don't know if you received the email I sent with some notes. Don't start quoting. You know, there's a sign sheet.
Thank you, Ken, for your attendance.
Whoop.
Hey, you what?
Well, that's not helpful.
Hey, Blue, you wrote it down.
Yeah, we're doing it.
All right. Administrative tasks taken care of. My name is Jack Berry from 37 Corby Woodland. I'm here tonight to voice some concerns over the draft of the solar ordinance. While I fully support the township's role in guiding responsible development, and much of the ordinance has good information in it, I believe their draft overreaches and risks conflicting with state-level regulations, including those from the PUC. Local solar energy, especially when paired with battery storage, is a vital part of building energy independence. It reduces our community's dependence on this entire plant, that owning infrastructure, and the volatile markets. And it also brings frame from the grid. The ordinance has a few items that have to create unnecessary barriers to that kind of resilience, and may prevent property-earned farmers and businesses from making a practical law for the use of their own property to generate power, often with no clear public benefit. So, one thing that I could just touch on, a few points on the paper I handed out, that is the commentary, and we produced this to help everybody out a bit. If you haven't had time to review the ordinance, I may be able to, yours here too. I did have, in section one, I mentioned some things under definitions, some of them are minor. I'm not going to get to all of them. The other item I mentioned, item D, "solar farm," which is used in the title of the ordinance, is an incorrect term, I believe. This ordinance covers accessory, S-E-S, accessory-type energy solar systems, which is residential. But this is not about solar energy generation for commercial. This is also residential. In that residential section, the ASES, it connection set, item 87 incorrectly states "all energy created by the ASES is to be used on-site." This is a problem because we have no metering in Pennsylvania. The extra energy being created may be sent back to grid. In addition, this is regulated by the PUC, and it is our understanding that the township has no jurisdiction over this. And as you know, ordinances are of a legal basis and could be challenged in court. So this is important to get it correct. I have a reference there to the PUC ASES Act 19, point 29, on that metering, which I included in the packet I sent you. The other items I wanted to point out, one thing I added to this, since you received it this morning, was under the bottom page two, I added the note about the solar energy facility. It appears there's a misinvestment in this ordinance. The accessory solar is limited to 50 KV or less, kilowatts or less. The solar energy facilities appear to be targeted at large-scale solar installations for power generation. The ordinance appears to be missing an intermediate definition. This would be facilities like rooftops, and a great example is the Pitta, Ohio Trucking number 910. There is no allowance in the ordinance for somebody to put a solar installation on a rooftop on a Walmart, or, you know, John Hallabah's Athletic Center, if it's over 50 KV, kilowatts. So, that's a major, I think, item that's missing, and it could be interpreted as being prevented by the current ordinance, because the solar energy facilities are only allowed in a rural estate district. And we're questioning why they would not be allowed in C1 and C2, and particularly industrial. The other thing I wanted to point out on the, on the ordinance is that in A.16, under these solar energy facilities, it requires a sound study for noise produced towards construction. And we don't require that for any other use. We don't require that for housing developments or anything else. That's the temporary sound during construction. It also requires a separate sound study, I believe, for the solar panels themselves. They're silent. I have them in my backyard. So, I'm not sure why that's even in there. I'm also concerned that we're overreaching on a glare study. It says in the ordinance, "in one-minute intervals over the course of a year for residents within a thousand feet." Solar panels do not produce glare. They're coated with an anti-glare coating, because you want to harvest every darn photon. So, while they do have a rating, glare studies are generally oriented towards aviation, and they're not even, you know, something that's aviation. So, you can read about it. They have a thing, solar panel glare. Is it an issue? Is there a link to that? And then the other thing is, okay, one last thing I want to mention, then, is under section five, battery energy storage, it's requiring 50 acres to have a battery storage facility? A lot of these battery storage facilities are just like containers. That's what they look like. They're a bunch of containers. You drop one on an acre. So, I don't know why we're requiring 50 acres for that. So you have the rest of my comments in there, and I just want to ask that you pass this only, or if you recommend this, that it includes the changes that we bottom-hynd, or the items that address those changes. These are legitimate concerns, and there's a number of them. Again, thank you for your time and service, and for hearing me out. Anybody have any questions? If you're, I'm happy to answer.
We reserve the right to ask questions.
I am happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any additional public comment?
Nicole Zeeland, Glasgow Road. As was previously pointed out, once a hearing has been announced to vote to adopt an ordinance, no significant changes can be made to that draft. So your recommendations tonight on both the nonprofit and solar farm regulation ordinance are irrelevant unless the board rescheduled the hearing, or votes no on adopting the ordinances. I know the board mentioned they're expecting solar proposals soon, and they wanted to get something on the books, but I'm worried that this attitude of rushing through ordinances that are not thoughtfully tailored to West Deer's needs is setting a careless precedent. This also sends a message that the opinions of our community experts and neighbors are unimportant. It feels unfair to ask you all to provide feedback that can't be incorporated. I'm therefore requesting that, in addition to your recommendations tonight, you strongly advise the board to reschedule the hearing, or vote no on passing the solar farm regulation ordinance as is. West Deer deserves collaboration with stakeholders who can contribute to voting informed policies that will shape the future of our township. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Any additional public comment? Hearing done. Public comment period is now closed. Planning Commission discussion.
Well, I applaud the proactive stance that the supervisors are taking on this. But I think we can come up with enough conditions or recommendations tonight, and still vote no on this. They can still ask us. They don't need our approval, especially not unanimous approval. We went through this with the gas wells, when we were told we were going to be able to change the gas well ordinances, and then we got our hands tied on that. So, what my recommendation to this Planning Commission is to vote no on this ordinance, but by voting no, we can still make recommendations. It's only if we do not vote on it that we can't make recommendations. I'll be voting no because of some of the, the things that Mr. Rierick and Zeeland brought up, but I wanted to go on record that the Planning Commission, unlike the gas well ordinance that was passed last year, that we did not unanimously approve this. And if the supervisors want to reschedule the hearing, I think that would be in their best interest to do that, but I will not be backing them with, with the current ordinance the way it's written. I will not be promoting the ordinance.
I, I agree with Mr. Hallaba, and I think it's Mr. Rierick and Mrs. Zeeland both made great points substantively and procedurally. It's not just the substance of the ordinance, and I think there should be a solar regulation ordinance, but unlike with the nonprofit ordinance, it's not a sentence we can recraft in 15 minutes. This is too important, it's too comprehensive, there's research that needs to be done. It looks like Mr. Rierick made it from the start, but I can't sit here and tell you that I am knowledgeable about enough about what he's saying, and I also think the public needs to be more involved in the process. So, I'm going to be voting no with Mr. Hallaba, and want to send a message to the supervisors to do the process differently, and incorporate public information and expert knowledge before coming up with the draft, and then begin that process again.
All right. Thank you. Couple items that I saw, and I did have an opportunity, Mr. Rierick, to review comments. Thank you. Certainly some things here that need thought about. The one thing that I would say, there were certain things he had pointed out about, we can't, the township, we, the township can't regulate certain things because it's under the PUC. Section six of the ordinance does allow for that, basically if any part of it is against the law, then it's, you know, null and void. So there, there's that good part. I don't know if you noticed that or not, but...
I think from a technical perspective, and I just wanted to start by saying, I really appreciate this level of pride you put into this, what you put into this. The one thing that I think you brought up that is really significant is, is right now, as it's written, this "all energy created by the ASES is to be used on-site," when in fact, we know that that's, that's not true. There's systems now that are, you know, that are putting electrons back into the grid once, you know, once they're full, once batteries are full. So we know technically it's incorrect, at least that one piece. I haven't had a chance to review the whole thing either, but, so what does that mean in terms of, would that stall somebody's, you know, decision today to actually put rooftop solar on, because they might put excess energy back into the grid? As written, that's, it's kind of counterintuitive.
It could deter prospective clients to even construct a project there.
And we were close. I mean, we had the guy sitting at our table, went going through the whole financials, and we were very close to doing this as well. So I know they're in, they're in the township, they're talking to residences, this aspect of it anyhow, but, I guess it comes down to a question of, do, do we recommend approval of a partial, something that's partially there, and that's better than nothing? Or, or do we say, we'd like to get this right and kick it back? So I guess that, in my mind, that's kind of the, the argument that we're, we're making.
And the argument was the gas wells also. We went back and forth on that for years. This, this ordinance, and this is the first time we're ever seeing.
So, with that discussion...
What if we don't pass something? Isn't there some concerns about that? Are there state regulations? I mean, are there state regulations that would take care? Because the, the effects of getting this pushed through is if we don't have anything. And if somebody applies, we have no way of, you know, regulating that.
Well, I think, yeah, the thought there is, and I brought this, this was, you know, just out of the Tribune Review, there was mention about, you know, other local communities. And here's a, an article called "Not So Sunny Dispositions: Buffalo Township Solar Farm Plans Receive Blowback From Residents." It was a rather compelling article. Buffalo Township seemed to get a little bit caught by not having things in place, and a lot of the residents are very upset, but if you don't have something in place, then you really don't give the township and zoning enforcement any ability to say no. At this point, I think what we're saying is this may provide a lot of ability to say no, maybe more than is intended. So I guess the question is, in an imperfect world, which is better?
There's too much overreach on private property rights in this ordinance, the way it's written, period.
Can we not come up with something shorter?
This isn't a one-sentence thing like the last one.
You know, we didn't, you know...
We're here till Tuesday.
You know, we don't have it then yet, but it's coming. I don't know.
My opinion, we put this back in the supervisor's lap. But our recommendation, my recommendation would be to not approve. I'd rather, I'd rather have nothing than the way it's written.
Are you recommending, or are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion to not approve it. If you're asking for a motion at this time.
If you'd like to make a motion, you are free to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to not approve the proposed zoning ordinance on the solar, on the solar farm issue, again, the way it's currently worded.
What if we tabled it and asked...
Well, let's, hold on. We have a motion on the floor. So I have a, I have a motion to not approve based on the ordinance as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any further discussion? And, Mr. Harrison?
Yeah, that would just, can't we not, I mean, move the hearing? Nothing is written yet. Can't we take time to, to review this and push it back a month?
The hearing's scheduled before next month.
We could, we could ask them to, he changed the hearing to get more...
Joseph, what are your thoughts on that?
That's up to the board. If the board cancels the hearing, or if they have the hearing on the 16th, and they vote not to adopt this, then, then there is no ordinance, and it would be up to them to schedule a new hearing. And the earliest they could do that would be two months out, so the next earliest opportunity would be September.
Joseph, can you give us some context to what's, what's at risk right now? What are the solar developers proposing? What's, what was the concern of the Buffalo? Are we talking 50-acre farms? Are we talking 10? Are we talking 5-acre? What's the...
This was a 19-acre and an 81-acre, just from the article.
Yeah, it's my, it's my understanding, they can be as large as a company wants to make them. I, I do not know the minimum acreage that they need, but the issue is, at least from a zoning perspective, one of the, the big problems that could arise is, you know, we talk about, right now, the proposal is for it to be in just the R district, which is the far northern part of the township. As it currently stands, without an ordinance, a developer could find an acre parcel that meets their needs in R2 or R3. And these could be placed next to a housing development such as Cedar Ridge or Grouse Run, because Cedar Ridge is R2, Grouse Run's R3, but there is a parcel, I believe it's 45 acres in size, that borders Cedar Ridge. So, that's one element of this that, that this ordinance hopes to address, is preventing that possibility from happening.
But we allow gas wells in that district.
Yeah, yep.
We're talking about solar right now, Mr. Hallaba.
We're talking about the gas wells, the solar...
I'm addressing Mr. Maltese's question.
Go ahead. Please finish.
So, to answer that question, Mr. Maltese, that's one of the elements that this is meant to address. As far as Buffalo Township goes, and as well as other townships that have had these come in, that's, one of the big issues with solar energy is getting it to the grid. So, another element that, that West Deer works in against us, I guess you could say, is we are far away from what would be their transmission point for energy. So, any solar farm that came in, and I'm talking the large-scale, I'm not talking about the accessory uses, you know, on roofs and that kind of thing. But if a solar farm itself did come in, the probability that there would be on-site battery storage is, is high. And that's where the danger with these comes in, because those are lithium-ion battery storage containers. And they're highly combustible, I mean, all that comes into play. So, that's another element that this is meant to at least address in some way. That's just a, a few of the points. Again, as Mr. Robb's, as his firm is seen with other clients, that's what's come up in the discussions, and the blowback from residents in those townships. That's what they've brought up.
Legal question, I guess, though. So, in current ordinance, though, would this not fall under a conditional use since the use in our ordinance is not defined?
Since the use is not defined, then it would fall under the category of all other uses. And every, and, and for that category, it's not allowed in any district except, I believe, an I, and it's conditional. So, if a developer walked in today, for example, with an application for a solar farm, that application would go to a zoning hearing board.
And under I as conditional?
And under, only under I as conditional, yes.
So, I'm, I'm talking a lot. I'm not trying to piss anybody off. If we were to not approve, and the supervisors, I'm trying to understand this, the supervisors were to push essentially where I heard it was to September, all we're doing is limiting the developer to I under a conditional use?
Well, and the other thing too, and this is just kind of a side tangent to that, in a conditional use hearing, a lot more conditions can be placed on somebody. You know what I mean, development, that kind of thing. So, again, if a matter went to the zoning hearing board currently, they could place conditions also, but they're a lot more limited in their ability. So, again, if you put something under a conditional use hearing, you know, as you all well know, it comes to you all first, then goes to the supervisors, and is vetted that way. And, and when I said September too, just to touch on that point too, I would, if this was not adopted in July, I highly doubt, again, I can't say for certain, but I highly doubt it would be immediately rescheduled, because there's a reason that it's not being adopted, as in, there needs to be changes to it. So then, their August meeting would be the first meeting probably that they would reconsider, and then that pushes to October, if that, if that makes sense. I'm just saying they, highly unlikely to not adopt in one meeting, and in the same meeting, just vote to re-advertise, because there's been no change to the ordinance.
Good.
So I'm, I'm 100% clear, though, though, if, so I understand how long voting is that by delaying passage of this to correct things that I, I think we know what to, the township's still protected other than in I districts? So, is that correct?
Just from the land use perspective, yes. But, I mean, again, other things that are listed in here has been referenced to glare, to sound studies, that, that's not applicable, that would not be applicable.
But if we...
And I just highlight those because, you know, they're...
Right, but if we don't have the use, it would be any other, which is only limited to I?
Yes, but then there's still have free rein as far as size, as far as, you know, the storage, all that kind of stuff, the transmission, like there's, that's just from a where-it-can-go perspective.
Understood, understood. I, I'm also thinking about if we do, because there's members of the Planning Commission that want to, and there's a motion on the table, to not approve, we're, and we're protecting our residential currently, we're still covering that if we wait to get it written the way we want to. My understanding, I, I'm not trying to be vain.
No, no, no. Yes, from a land use perspective, it still would have to, it would go to a zoning hearing board. It's just all the other elements that, again, as I mentioned, I don't mean to keep repeating myself, but those elements would not be applicable. So, like I say, size, you know, studies, those kind of things would not apply.
But it could only occur in zoning District I?
As a conditional use.
As a conditional use.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry.
No.
I had one other question, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Robb isn't here today. Would it be, or would it be beneficial? Right now, we're, you know, one of the big problems is we're, we're limiting this to a conditional use in the rural estate district. Would it be a material change if that was just changed to all districts as a conditional use? Could it be reworded in that way? And would that be beneficial? Would that fix some of the problems? If it wouldn't be material and cause, it's here and going with us.
That would be material.
It'd be material. That was my fear. Not in a term. Thank you very much.
Play one on the screen.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Shuck, may I have a roll call?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I made a motion...
You did make a motion? You had a second? Yes. We have to vote on that motion.
Right. But if I vote yes, that means I'm voting yes on my motion.
Yes. Correct. So, if you're for denying, you vote yes. If you're for keeping, vote no. Okay. Point of clarification, thank you. All right. Moving to the roll call.
Okay, Mr. Erasik.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
I'm staying. I don't think we have enough time to do this. I'm worried that you're not pa...
passing something, or we should just table this and push it, and add more colleagues to it, so I'm just abstaining. I think you're hanging supervisors out to dry by not doing something, taking the time to look at it.
Mr. Maltese.
Yes.
Mr. Hollabaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion passes five in favor and one abstention.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schup.